Good afternoon, welcome to the October 14th meeting of the Wall Township Board of Education. At this time, please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smythe, sunshine announcement and roll call, please.
Yes, this is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for which adequate notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by a notice to the Co-Star, Asbury Park Press, Township Clerk's Office, all Wall Township public schools and the Board Administration office on January 9th, 2025. Take a roll call, Mr. -- Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Anisio? Ms. Barbieri?
Here.
Mr. Broerton?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Mr. Mallow?
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask for a -- to go into executive session. I have a -- Motion, thank you, Ms. Di Giovanni.
All second.
Second, Mr. Smith, and roll call for -- all in favor? Aye. We will go into executive session for the items indicated on the agenda, and we anticipate that we will be back for the meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Wall Township Public Board Meeting for October 14, 2025. At this time, we welcome the Wall High School NNDCC color guard to present the colors for the pledge of the flag.
Ready, cut. Forward, march. Right wheel, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready. Crouch. Ready, cut. Right wheel, march. Forward, march. Ready, crouch. Order. Crouch. Ready, cut. Color guard, hold up.
Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Anizio?
Here.
Ms. Barbier?
Here.
Mr. Brereton?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Mr. T. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Landrak?
Here.
Mr. Malas?
Here. At this time, I'd like to welcome our student representative tonight, Ms. Hazel Garot, who is going to give the student representative report. And welcome, this is your first time before us, we're very happy to have you. I know you're going to be trading off with your partner, but welcome, and we're anxious to hear your report.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Hazel Garot. I'm the president of the student council, and I'm excited to be one of the Wall High School student representatives alongside my talented friend, Sophia Kepping. We have taken this opportunity with great responsibility and enthusiasm. Sophia will be attending the next meeting. The first month of the school year has been off to a great start. Our homecoming spirit week showcased impressive participation from every grade level in the dress theme days, and especially during the pep rally and homecoming game, which really brought the whole school together. Fall sports are in full swing, and it's been great seeing together. Fall sports are in full swing, and it's been great seeing students come out and cheer on their teams. The pep rally began to kick off America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday and the one-hundred-seventy-fifth anniversary of all, with speeches from Monmouth County Clerk, Ms. Christine Hanlon, County Commissioners, Mr. Thomas Arnon, and Mr. Nick DeRoco. The pep rally included a series of games and events, with students from each grade competing against each other and the staff. In addition to the games, all our fall sports teams were highlighted and introduced, the cheerleaders performed routines, and the marching band played throughout the pep rally. Our homecoming corps consisted of ten seniors nominated by the class of two thousand and twenty-six: Angelina Dahlia, Madeline Peterson, Hazel Garot, Ella Shibley, Lyndon Chen, Rudra Patel, Rex Peterson, Luca Rulli, Thomas Pliskey, and Daniel Mahoney. Our homecoming king and queen was Rudra Patel and Madeline Peterson, and they were crowned at the game on Friday night. We had an amazing night full of school spirit and excitement. Last week, our school celebrated the Week of Respect, which focuses on the importance of respect for oneself, others, the school, and the community, to prevent bullying and foster stronger and more inclusive community. Throughout the week, students participated in various lunchtime activities to promote kindness and connection. Some activities were the chalk walk, where students drew and wrote positive messages on the sidewalk for peers and staff to see; window kindness wall, which filled the breezeway with notes of encouragement and genuine connection; a game where players answered questions to learn more about each other. Together, these activities helped build a supportive and respectful community. That's all from Wall High School for now. Thank you for your time. We look forward to sharing more updates and new initiatives at our next meeting.
Thank you, Hazel, for that report. Much appreciated by the board. Certainly, you're welcome to stay around as long as you would like, all right? But I know students at this department are very busy, so whenever you wish, you know, we will see you again very soon. Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
There are no special, no student presentations tonight. At this time, we're going to open up the floor for our first public comment, all right? And the board requests those individuals speaking will be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when making comments. Specifically, comments regarding individual students and school personnel are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Wall Township Board of Education bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Speakers should consider their comments and light of the legal rights of those affected by or identified in their comments, and recognize they are legally responsible for and liable for their comments. And please observe our policy of three minutes per speaker. We have a microphone at the top. We have a microphone here. Please step up to the microphones and identify yourself.
Good evening. Leah Bibby, Wall Township. I'm here today to discuss a few issues that have been going on. One that is pertinent continues and seems to be getting worse, and that is the busing issue. That is consistent and, like I said, continues to get worse. I experienced myself last week. My son's bus was on time, and I drove at around four fifteen, I drove down the road in my neighborhood, two blocks down, and there was another bus at four seventeen dropping off elementary school students. This is almost an hour after dismissal. This is an issue that I don't know if anybody has seen a lot of people talking about online. I heard, I don't know if this is true, but one of the parents of that bus, I asked them, what happened? They said, I heard that ten bus drivers called out, and this was Friday of last week. I am, I don't know if there's a shortage of bus drivers, but again, the lack of communication between the administration and the public regarding these issues, we are just left here twiddling our thumbs and wondering what is going on, and no one is talking to anyone about it. If there is an issue and you are working on it, we'd like to know. That way, we're on the same page as you, and, you know, people can be a little bit more lenient and understanding when we are all informed of what is going on. So just keep that in mind. That is a serious issue. A lot of parents are having concerns with. In turn, also, this makes the pickup lines very long, because parents need to get their kids to extracurriculars or after-school activities, and relying on the bus to be on time or within ten, fifteen minutes late is fine, but an hour is a little outrageous, especially regularly, at least once a week. So that is all I wanted to bring up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with a public comment?
Good evening. Angelique Pinto, Wall Township. I would like to comment about the schedule and curriculum changes in the elementary schools again. I am once again requesting you revert. From what we have been told piecemeal since the spring was that the administration made the changes to create the time fifteen minutes a day, seventy-five minutes a week for morning meetings, which we have come to know is mostly Seven Mindsets programming. Myself and so many others, parents, students, and teachers have come before you, month after month, to oppose these changes that include reducing gym, ban during school hours, library, technology, and even the end of the school day dismissal activities, et cetera. Also, no one will say how much this is costing the district for Seven Mindsets, but what these kids are losing in their specials and daily activities is not justifiable. I know other school districts, you can find a few contracts online from around the nation for sizable communities like ours that have spent, I don't know, anywhere from over a hundred to two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. I know it depends on the tier you choose, but it looks like this marketing product aims to get you to just keep buying up. In addition to your tier, you can buy webinars. Speakers go to events like Seven Mindsets Life Summit and Seven Mindset University, as I'm sure you are probably aware, since I believe we just sent three administrators, two teachers, and a school social worker to Disney Springs for a three-day conference, the total cost of more than six thousand dollars. This is a marketing product that sells you seven basic concepts. Everything is possible. Passion first. We are connected. A hundred percent accountable. Attitude gratitude. Live to give. And the time is now. What needed to be studied about for these three days in Disney Springs? What is it about these uncomplicated concepts that we had to turn four elementary schools upside down to make time for? Also, there's no continuing education credits given for anyone attending those, because it's not really an academic program. Allenwood, by the way, just offered a technology program after school, of course. It is for a fee, but it sold out in like an hour. This is one of the subjects we were getting for our kids with our taxes that was built into the school day that has been eighty-sixed for Seven Mindset morning meetings. Where are we going with this? Are we going to just keep buying up and spending more? I know my middle child, a freshman at the high school, was pulled out of gym either last week or the week before to go to the library to open a Seven Mindset account. I know the kindergarten orientation spoke about rewards and different awards for kids that promote the Seven Mindset material. I don't know what we are involved in or where this is going, but the time is now, if you see what I just did there, to stop this. It's your function and role to shape the policies and opportunities for our students in our public schools in the way that the majority of people in our community request. We have voiced our opposition repeatedly. You should not operate in a vacuum and force your own agenda into this district against the majority of parents and stakeholders, just because you decided to or just because you want to. That is not the authority you have been given in this role. At back-to-school night, I saw a sign in my youngest child's classroom over in Allenwood. It was a saying from MLK Junior, and it said, "The time is always right to do what is right." So please do the right thing right now and give the kids back their activities and their time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with a public comment?
Hi, Melanie Cortez, Wall Township. I'm sure we are all aware Wall Schools on fairly made headlines again, national. I just learned, this time using our students as a negative example of this generation and their perceived shortcomings, lucky us. I definitely don't want to dwell on that nonsensical story. We can't control if the media deems a social media rant newsworthy, but as the parent of a high schooler, I do want to address access to our students and response from the district. My older child was a student during quite a few school scandals here. Many, many mornings, there were cameras across the street, but they were always on private property. Last week's non-story shows the reporter speaking to students in the high school parking lot. I don't expect an answer tonight, but what I ask is that the board clarify or review the policy for media presence on school property. The required media consent policy, which parents sign before the school year, only goes as far as "the newspaper," I quote. I would assume the intent was not for students to be the subject of national news or even tri-state news. Maybe, hopefully, this is a one-time thing, and my concern is unnecessary. But as a parent who has been through this with the Wall High School news cycle, the time to make this clear is now. I personally am always happy to have my child in the co-star, but do not consent to my child being approached by larger media on school property. And as for responding, there's always just too much no comment from Wall School District. I just ask you to counteract this. Play their game. Ask CBS or Inside Edition or Dana Perino to cover a unified sports event. Offer to host them at the fall play. Let them see the school spirit at Thanksgiving game. Let's comment with pride, love, and support. Kids are listening. Just minutes ago, I heard them talking about this, and one remarked, "every single year," and sadly, they aren't wrong. So let's stick up for them. Show them. We know they are more than screen-gazing basement dwellers who don't want to dance. Also, shout out to the PTO, who answered the call just two short years ago to bring this stance back, based on student interest and would have happily kept it going. There's no blame here, but let's also make sure our volunteers feel appreciated and not blamed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a public comment? Someone up top.
What did you want to say? Now you're too shy. Do you want me to say it for you?
I want to do it.
Okay. Sorry.
You can, would you like to speak for your child?
No.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Magnus. I go to Allenwood, and I'm not happy that they cut all the specials and that they're counting gym and morning meeting as recess.
Recess and morning meeting. Say it again. Morning meeting and gym as, or morning meeting.
Morning meeting and gym as recess. I mean as gym. And... What was I going to say?
Anything else? Is it just the specials?
Yeah.
He misses his gym time. All right, Ty. Okay, and this is Ty.
I'm not happy... I'm not happy that STEM is only once a week.
Or once, every other week.
Every other week. I want it to be once a week.
Thank you. I'm just a show person.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with a public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is John Reno. I have three boys at Old Mill. Tonight, I want to raise two serious district-wide safety and communication concerns that parents from every school have brought forward who cannot be here tonight, so I'm speaking on their behalf. Since the first week of school, families across Wall have been experiencing significant and repeated delays with student transportation. I personally heard from more than twenty families describing buses that are arriving thirty to sixty minutes late for both morning and pickup and afternoon drop-off, with little to no communication from the district. These are just few examples sent to me by parents. The Purple Route at Allenwood was late almost every day. Last week, my son didn't get home until four twenty. Dismissals at three twenty. Old Mill School Blue Bus was late both AM and PM most of last week. Pickup after nine AM some mornings, home at four fifteen. High school buses are coming thirty minutes early some days. Kids are waiting outside in the dark before six AM. Green Route at Central has no notification system. Parents are using a shared Google Doc to track delays. That's unacceptable. And let me be very clear. Parents understand that buses will run late sometimes. We understand drivers call out. What we cannot understand is why there's no reliable communication system in place to notify parents before delay becomes a safety concern. Parents need to know when their children are stranded at a bus stop in the dark, or when they don't arrive home as expected. A simple, immediate text alert is not difficult and has already exists in many nearby districts. We must do better. This is not a new issue. Lack of communication has become a pattern, and it's eroding the trust between families and the district leadership. The second concern is far more alarming: student safety during lunch and recess. Multiple district employees have reported, and parents have now confirmed that many of the staff supervising elementary lunch and recess are not certified in CPR or the Hymic maneuver. We eliminated trained lunch aids last spring. Now we have staff supervising large groups of children during the two highest risk times of the day, and they are not trained to respond to choking or cardiac emergencies. Choking is the fourth-leading cause of unintentional death in children under fourteen. Lunch monitors are legally responsible for supervising student safety. This is not a funding issue. It's a student safety issue. One choking emergency without trained responders can turn into a tragedy, and it will be fully preventable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with a public comment?
In Allenwood, the website you have for the buses is not updated. I know it. It's not updated at all in the afternoons. I hear the buses, I know what they're doing. They're calling it in, and they're not putting it on the website. Update the website that you have the capability of doing it in the transportation office.
Thank you. Anyone else with a public comment?
Hi, I'm Colleen McCormick of Wall. Here to share some information I gathered about the Seven Mindsets program that is stealing health and phys ed time from our children. I feel the public has a right to know how much has been wasted on this completely unnecessary program, a program that was created by people with absolutely no background or experience in education, which they state quite openly on their website. Since my requests for this information have been ignored multiple times, I was forced to do some digging on my own. No wonder no one wanted to answer my questions. At a quick glance through the purchase orders, it appears as though this program alone has cost at least a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Let me be clear. I have no problem with lessons on mental health. What I do have a problem with is this program taking away from the required health and PE curriculum, where most of these concepts already exist. Essentially, you're paying these scammers, sorry, entrepreneurs, to, sorry, for lessons our students already receive. A complete waste of funds. These seven mindsets are essentially character education, which is a decades-old concept now being marketed with a new name while trying to capitalize on the mental health craze sweeping the nation. It appears most of these expenses were paid for with grant money, but it's my understanding that the grant money runs out in two thousand and twenty-six. I'm requesting the district to stop using this program and give the time back to health and PE. What better way to improve mental health than by getting up and moving the body? Countless studies prove this very point. In addition, and perhaps the most disturbing abuse of money did not come from a grant, but rather general funds, where over six thousand dollars was spent just to send six people to Orlando to attend the Mindset University. Three administrators, two teachers, and one social worker got a mini-vacation in Orlando just weeks after all of our paraprofessionals were fired. On top of that, ninth graders wasted an entire PE period going to the library just to create Seven Mindsets accounts. Perhaps even worse, fourth graders at one of the elementary Perhaps even worse, fourth graders at one of the elementary schools were recently enticed by a staff member to talk with their friends in focus groups surrounded around mental health strategies. The problem, these focus groups are taking place during lunch and recess. When will you learn recess is time for our children to actually experience their feelings in the limited time you give them? Parents, if all of this does not make you lose faith in the people currently making decisions, I don't know what will. The trust is gone. We need new members on the board who will see the mismanagement happening and are willing to do something about it. People who actually care about what's best for our children and will make sure they get what they need and deserve. Please vote wisely on November 4th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Mike Zadlak, I spoke at the last meeting, and my issues have still not been addressed. There is zero accountability and zero oversight for our busing issue that a couple of parents have already spoken about. I have reached out to Senator Gopala, Assemblyman Keane, I've spoken to the superintendent and business administrator, and no solutions have been brought to any of the parents' minds to keep them happy with the safety of our children. I had brought up back on September 5th, there was a motor vehicle accident involving a bus. I had pulled that motor vehicle accident report from the Wall Township records, and the bus driver could not make an accurate turn down a small street. He then decided to unsafely back up and hit a parked car. That's a huge concern because the bus driver did not receive any reevaluation for training, which is a major concern for our streets that don't have sidewalks. I have reached out numerous times, and I have zero confidence that this is being addressed or taken seriously because my children can no longer take the bus because we do not feel safe that the bus driver can get our kids to and from home safely. So we have to do private trans, which is causing a huge burden on us to have to leave work so our kids can get home safely. This is a massive issue, and out of your district policies and regulations, you have 694 of them. Six of them actually account towards this issue, which counts for less than 1%. Most of your policies are outdated. It's 2009, 2016. Where's the updates? It seems like it's a copy-and-paste kind of thing from the previous administration to the current, and that is not acceptable for our parents. We do not feel safe with our children doing that, and I honestly feel that you guys seem like this is a reactive situation when you should be proactive. That is a major concern because when an issue happens, we can say, "We've been addressing this issue with you," and no one want to take it seriously. With elected officials and appointed people, you should really listen to the concerns of the public because this is not acceptable whatsoever. Again, there's no solution, and we just have to accept what this is happening, and that is not right. We are taxpayers, and we want the best quality for our kids, and we're not getting that whatsoever. There was no retraining. The transportation company, after the accident happened, told the parents they need to call the school. There is a very lack of time from the parents finding out their kids were involved in a motor vehicle accident to being told they can't be told where the location is of the accident, but to call the school. And the school was lucky enough to have the parents get there, which is absolutely unacceptable. However, when I have met with the superintendent and the business administrator on October 10th, oh, I'm sorry, October 9th, it seems like I was very dismissive by the business administrator. Again, as parent, we should have solutions for concerns for our children. I have filed a formal complaint against the bus driver, but yet he is still actively driving the bus with our children on there. And that is unsafe for my two young girls to be on that bus with a grown man that obviously does not care about their safety. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Board of Ed, and thank you for our time for speaking. I'm Matthew Meakin with Wall Township. I'd also like to speak on behalf of the Homecoming Dance and how it made national news. I don't like the idea of being categorized as a kid who just sits on his phone all day and doesn't go to dances. I bought a ticket for the dance, I was going to go, but me and my date were very upset when we found out it was canceled. And then, the following days, we found out we were classified as people who don't go to dances anymore because kids are losing interest and they're addicted to their phones. I don't believe that's true at all. A ton of the dances I've gone to, the venue has always been filled, and I believe none of them sit on their phones the entire dance. But the Homecoming Dance is, I'm not going to say it's bad, but it's not as good as the other dances. Kids know that, they don't want to show up for it. But the fact that it made news, and the school hasn't done anything to justify the students, I think it's unacceptable. And I wear this uniform every day on Friday, I don't need to also be categorized as a kid who's addicted to his phone. I've been to four, I'm going to three other dances this year. If I find out that they're canceled and I'm classified as a kid who's stuck on his phone all day, that's just a waste of money on my part, and I don't believe it's right.
Hello, Board. My name is Frankie De Silva, and I would just like to say that, as she stated perfectly, me and my friends, the whole day today, were joking about how we have made national news pretty much every year that I have been a student at Wall High School. Now, this situation is nowhere near as serious as the previous situations, but the fact that our students on our property, which is supposed to be, school is supposed to be a place where you're safe from outside influences like that, the fact that students on school property got interviewed by national news without the school's knowing is just unacceptable. And the fact that our students were put on blast because of the dance getting canceled, we're not the first school who's canceled a dance before. The fact that we're the ones who are, who have a label on us now of the kids who are addicted to their phones, the kids who don't want to socialize, the kids who only hang out in small groups because it's easier, it's ridiculous. And I went through the comments of the posts that CBS made, and it was all people saying how they're so disappointed in this generation for not wanting to go out and socialize. But the fact that we're being generalized because of something that was completely out of our control, we didn't cancel the dance. I have many friends, including myself, who bought tickets to the dance just for it to get canceled. Like I, like he said, I'm not saying because it was bad, but compared to the other dances, homecoming has never been the most popular option. So, to end off, I would just like to say that we shouldn't be generalized because of something that happens, and just because something happens doesn't mean that we have to be on national news every time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Well said. Anyone else for public comment? And before the NNDCC exits, I'd like to thank you and Colonel Jacks for your longtime participation in our meetings. We appreciate it very much, and thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hanahan.
One second. No, I just want to make a comment with regard to...
Mr. Smythe, please.
With regard to public comment, with busing, student transportation, I'll respond to the couple of speakers with regard to the busing. One, being dismissive, I take exception to that. I think having evening phone calls that last at least 30 to 45 minutes, also participating in a meeting for almost an hour to discuss transportation issues a resident has, is not being dismissive because the district currently does not agree with the allegations that are being made does not mean being dismissive. So there's been considerable amount of time that has been put in to address those concerns. With regard to the timeliness of our school buses, it is a known issue. We have an individual on tonight's agenda, another bus driver that we are hiring. We have multiple drivers that are in training, so we're trying to bring them in. We realize, and I think everybody realizes, and it was commented tonight, that we're not going to be able to handle when there's a substantial absence from the Transportation Department. I don't know that it was 10, but anytime we're over five, six, seven absences, you know, that's not easily absorbed within the department with the limited number of subs we have. I will acknowledge that the communication going out to the parents with regard to timeliness and the schedule of the buses needs to improve, and the district will make a commitment to make sure that gets done.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. Okay, Dr. Hanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. Thank you, Mr. Malif. We have two special presentations here this evening. The first is a video presentation prepared by our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jennifer McCann, and it is one of our required presentations regarding state testing results. So, if you are, I think a few of us might be slightly in the way, so we might want to move, move just a little bit. And as soon as we do, if our amazing technology department can prompt the video.
Good evening. Tonight, we will review the results of the 2024-2025 State Assessments, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, commonly known as the NJSLA, and the Dynamic Learning Maps, or the DLM. These assessments provide valuable insight into how our students are performing in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, and they will help us identify both our strengths and areas for continued growth across the district. The NJSLA assessments are aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. They're administered each spring and measure how well students have mastered grade-level content. Students are scored on a five-level scale ranging from "did not meet expectations" to "exceeded expectations." These results give us a snapshot of both student achievement and instructional effectiveness. We will begin with ELA. The varying shades of purple show our scores over the past five years. Please keep in mind that there was no testing in 2020 to 2021 due to the pandemic. So with that said, each grade level is slightly above or slightly below our pre-pandemic scores, with some grades, like grade nine, having a more significant gain than the others. This is a different view of the same data, however, it focuses on the past two years and all of the performance levels. When viewing the data, the goal is from one year to the next to see less red, orange, and yellow, and more light green and dark green from year to year. Another way we look at the data is by cohort, meaning it is the same students but in consecutive grades. For example, you will see 62% of our third graders were meeting or exceeding expectations in 2023, 2024, but as fourth graders, we had 73% of the students meeting or exceeding expectations. Not only do we look at the data as an overall grade level, but we also look at it by subgroups, meaning race and program. When we look at the results this way, we see that over the past years, although we are doing well, our students are not necessarily showing or demonstrating much growth. This will be shown in another slide later in the presentation. When we look at the data by program, which means our L-students, free and reduced lunch, 504, special education, and general education students, you will see similar results from last year to this year. Again, our overall data does not show or demonstrate significant growth. In this particular slide, however, it does show that we need continued support for our L's population and our special education students. Similar to our ELA data, our overall percentage of students who are meeting and exceeding expectations in mathematics is not growing or declining at alarming rates. However, I would like to point out, grade eight and Algebra II have had continuous growth over the past four years. Grade eight math has gone from 6% meeting or exceeding expectations to 53% this past year, and Algebra II has increased from 57% to 91%. Similar to ELA, this is the same mathematics data but presented in a different manner, showing all of the performance levels, not just meeting or exceeding expectations. Here we have our math cohort data, where we're showing our students' growth from one year to the next, meaning one grade level to the next grade level. There are some where we demonstrate a decrease in scores, and others where we are plateaued, and others where we do demonstrate an increase. Here we have our mathematics results by race, which shows a year-to-year comparison from last year to this year for each of our subgroups, our students who are Asian, Black, Hispanic, multiple races, and white. These are our results by program. Again, our L's population, free and reduced lunch, 504 students, special ed students, and our general education students. Not only do we look at our data as a district, but we also look at each elementary school. There is a lot of data on this slide, meaning multiple years for each of our schools, but I would like to highlight the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations in both math and ELA for this current school year. Starting with grade three ELA, West Belmar was at 77%, Allenwood at 60%, Old Mill 55%, and Central School at 51%. I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to West Belmar. Over the past five years, they had a 27% increase, and from last year to this year, they grew 9%. Fourth grade ELA by school, we have Allenwood at 83%, Old Mill at 76%, West Belmar at 64%, and Central School at 63%. For mathematics, Allenwood is at 69%, Old Mill is at 70%, West Belmar is at 72%, and Central is at 47%. Grade five ELA across our four elementary schools, Allenwood at 84%, West Belmar at 73%, Central at 72%, Old Mill at 69%. Allenwood School for grade five ELA has demonstrated an 18% growth over five years and grew 4% from last year to this year. Grade five math, we have Central School at 62%, Allenwood at 61%, Old Mill at 59%, and West Belmar at 54%. We want students to demonstrate their abilities, but we also want them to grow from year to year. With that being said, it is important to look at the percentage of students who moved performance levels from year to year. As mentioned earlier, the district continues to perform well, but we haven't demonstrated growth. When we look at our mobility comparison, you will see just that. Most of our students remain in the same achievement level over a two-year period. Math yields similar results. However, I'd like to point out that Algebra I, eighth grade to ninth grade geometry, are two very different courses, but the sequence of coursework within our district and many others. The science assessment is administered in grades five, eight, and 11. You will see, looking at the slide, that our scores continue to incrementally increase. Like ELA and math, we do look at our subgroup data, particularly the race and program sections, to identify populations that we may need to provide additional academic supports. Our grade three students at West Belmar School showed strong performance in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, an encouraging sign as early literacy and numeracy are essential foundations for future success. The intermediate school, grade eight math, demonstrated impressive results, showing the strength of our middle school math program and preparation for high school coursework. And at Wall High School, both Algebra- And at Wall High School, both Algebra I and Algebra II results stood out as areas of success, highlighting the dedication of our teachers and students. Of course, with every data review, we also identify areas where we need to improve. One ongoing challenge is supporting the growth of specific student subgroups. We continue to see opportunity gaps that impact overall student growth, and our team is working diligently to address these disparities through targeted support and instructional strategies. Recognizing these challenges also allows us to focus our resources where they're needed most. To move forward, we're taking several important steps. First, our schools will continue to engage in data dives, which is a deep analysis of student performance at the classroom and individual student level. Second, we will continue to review our scope and sequence to ensure our curriculum pacing aligns tightly with state standards and assessment expectations. Finally, we're implementing targeted instruction, focused, data-informed support that meets students where they are and accelerates learning for those who need additional help. Schools who receive Title I funding, Central, West Belmar, the Intermediate School, and the high school will continue with morning and after-school support programs. These actions are designed to strengthen both teaching and learning across all grade levels. The Dynamic Learning Map Assessment is an alternate assessment designed for students with the most significant intellectual disabilities. It is designed to mirror the NJSLA with an ELA, math, and science component. It measures progress through four levels, from emerging to advanced, and allows us to better understand and celebrate the growth of all learners. We remain committed to ensuring that every student, regardless of ability, is supported and challenged to reach their fullest potential. The DLM results are presented as a whole district due to the small number of students who take it. First, we have ELA, with 22% of the students at target. Next, we have math, where 22% of the students are at target. Lastly, we have science, with all students performing at emerging. In summary, our 2024-2025 State Assessment results reflect both achievement and opportunity. We are proud of our students' accomplishments and deeply appreciative of our teachers' commitment to excellence. At the same time, we recognize the importance of continuous improvement, data-driven decisions, and equity in learning. Together, we'll continue to strengthen instruction and ensure that every Wall Township student thrives academically and personally. Thank you for your continued support of our schools and our students.
I'd like to thank Ms. McCann and her team for working together to really give us some perspective of, really, a district data dive and just a little sample of what is looked at across all of our schools. So thank you for that. This summer, we have, if you've driven and visited any of our schools, you might have noticed that we've had a tremendous amount of construction that has been going on. It's been going on the last couple of summers, actually, but this summer, I think, really, the pedal was to the metal. It's my pleasure to introduce our business administrator, Mr. Brian Smythe, to provide us with really an update of the projects, primarily from the Referendum 2022, of where we are. Some of the, for those of you that may not be in the schools, to have the opportunity to see some of the photos of some of the finished work and some timeline about what is about to, that we're going to get started on. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Smythe.
Thank you, Dr. Henderhand. And thank you for the opportunity to share some of the things from a facility standpoint, what has been happening in our schools since the referendum passed on December 13, 2022. That's why we refer to it as Referendum 2022. It has been very busy in our schools. And after all the activity this past summer, now's a good time to share some of the accomplishments and be able to show our stakeholders, you know, that approve the referendum funds, how those funds are being utilized within the district. I will ask you to bear with me. It's a lot of slides, but it's a $66 million referendum. We have seven school buildings. We've been doing this for three summers, and there was so much activity this past summer. In order to do each of the projects justice, it's a lot of slides. Now, we're not going to look too, and I'll do my best not to speak to each one of the slides. However, it's to be able to provide information, give you a little showcase of what has been accomplished and where to find additional information. And this slideshow will be provided on the district website tomorrow so that you can take your time and go through each of the slides. And to the point with regard to the amount of activity this summer, I know it's been mentioned by the superintendent as well as the board president, you know, the shout-out to our custodial staff and our maintenance staff for getting the schools back together for the start of this school year. You know, just the effort was tremendous. And the amount of work they accomplished in a short period of time in order to open up schools is just a credit to their hard work. So we have had the referendum. We've been working on it for three years. We report on a monthly basis on our district website. And where this starts from and everything that we do ties back to our district goals. So one of our district goals for Finance and Facilities Committee is District Goal Number Four. And it's that we'll practice fiscal responsibility in providing, maintaining facilities for student learning in the 21st century, and then also to provide clear and accurate reporting to the stakeholders. That's the Board of Education, and that's the community at large. We do that, and one of the tasks of that goal is supervision of the Referendum 2022. So how do we accomplish this goal? How do we meet that goal? So it starts with our Finance Facility Committee. We meet monthly, and these are our committees. It's chaired by Mr. Thomas Buffa, James Maliff, Board President is on the committee, and Board members Kathleen Di Giovanni and James Burerton. I was going to give a shout-out to Scotty as well. He attends our committee meetings. And then Scott Crisand is our Facilities Manager, myself, Superintendent of Schools, and Justin Kozik is our Project Architect for the Speysel Architectural Group, who also attends. We discuss each of the projects during these committees. And, you know, we do have the privilege of being the longest committee with regard to our durations each month. Our average meeting is at a minimum of two, typically three hours on a monthly basis. So we go through each of the projects, and as part of the committee, we have progress updates. And those progress updates are provided to the board and then as well to the public by posting on the district's website. We meet monthly. We provide the progress updates on the district website. We also post the financial summaries on the district website. And when you get to the website, and there's going to be a number of places in viewing this that you'll be able to scroll through, there's information that goes back to June of 2022 that lists archived website resources for pre-referendum information. We also have the bond sale, and again, the financial summaries and the progress updates. And again, if you're viewing this tomorrow, you'll be able to click on the information available from there, and it'll bring you right to the district website. This is a sample of the financial summary that is provided on a regular basis, again, on the district website. We break down the contracts or the scope of work based on the trades. We have roofing, and what I'll do is, this is pretty in-depth. It provides the original budget, any budget adjustments for the different categories, what the current budget is, and then it goes along the line. What I'll do is provide a second one, which just kind of summarizes the description of the work. We had shingle roofing at the high school. We had site improvements, site work that was performed at Allenwood School and West Belmar. We had toilet room renovations and interior renovations at each of the schools. So it was either toilet room elevations at the schools as well as significant interior renovations at the Intermediate School and the high school. We have the athletic improvements at the high school. HVAC work, which is being done. It was awarded over two contracts to two different contractors, and it covers each one of the schools. And you'll see the extent of the HVAC work that was done in subsequent slides. And then additionally, we had our built-up roofing at all schools. That work is, for the most part, complete, but this is available on the district website. What I do want to point out, it was a $66 million referendum. We've awarded over $65 million in contracts since the start. We have paid out $49 million, so we have about no more than $16 million that we've awarded. That is work that has yet to be completed and therefore yet to be paid. So our available balance to finish out referendum work is $1 million. We have one outstanding project. It is a roof replacement or roof coating, and that was not done. When the original built-up roof replacement or renovation work was done, because there was still mechanical work that needed to be done, that work will be put out to bid this winter with the work anticipated to be completed this summer, summer of 2026. But we have $1 million that, the outstanding roofing work will be less than, we anticipate being less than half a million dollars, but we have the second half of that million dollars held as contingency because we are still in the throes of a lot of work being done in the district. Okay, at this rate, it's going to be like an FNF meeting. We're going to be about two to three hours. So I'll categorize it by the schools. So this is the primary school. And you'll be able to take your time and go through the pictures, but we renovated toilet rooms. We did new physical therapy room that was created, and we have done window and door replacement in the school. These are photographs that show the before, and it's only the top left that was before, and then the remaining three was all work that was done after. For the most part, these are toilet facilities for the students, but as well as staff had a renovated toilet room as well. Second work at the primary school, this is photos of the new physical therapy. Previous to the referendum, there was a partitioned area of a classroom that was used with just room divider that were about the height, about six feet high, and that has now been constructed into its own independent room. As mentioned on the first slide, the window replacements, interior view and an exterior view for energy-efficient from single-pane windows, which is viewed up top, to double-pane, double-hung windows on the lower picture. That's the work that was done in the primary school, and the majority of that work was done in the summer of 2024. Not part of the referendum, but it was a capital project because in addition to the referendum, our annual school budget is including capital projects, and this is one of them. It was asphalt, it was repaving the parking lot at the primary school. This was done as a shared service with the County of Monmouth, Department of Public Works, that did the actual paving at that location. Again, not part of the referendum, but it is, it was a capital project. This is our special services building. If you've ever passed it on Bailey's Corner Road, these were the work that was done on the facility. And again, it was just, you know, a capital project that was used to maintain our facilities. So Allenwood School, again, this was done over multiple years. We had asphalt paving. The asphalt paving was done, actually, that was the first project that was done. It was site improvements at Allenwood School. That was done in the summer of 2023, included new sidewalks, site lighting, the front entrance, and some green space. We did renovated toilet rooms in the summer of, this past summer of 2025, as well as new HVAC, and roof restoration was done in the prior summer of 2024. This is the site work. This is an additional parking lot that was added at Allenwood School. The bottom picture shows the entrance and parking being repaved, but we added additional parking at the school by creating this additional parking lot. And that includes site lighting as well. These are two more pictures that provide the additional parking. This is the entrance where there was new concrete. Just to back up, this used to be asphalt paving. This entire area was asphalt paving. One of the goals in doing the site improvements, both here and West Belmar, was to move away from having blacktop up against the building on all sides. So what we did, looked to do was pull back the blacktop, create some green space and concrete walkways to make it more usable and not just for parking. So again, I think this looks tremendous. These are the toilet rooms at the Allenwood Elementary School. And we'll fire through these pretty quick. But gone are the days of just painted concrete or sheet rock. All the bathrooms are full floor-to-ceiling tile, terrazzo floor, all new fixtures, plumbing. And it wasn't just the, you know, the fixtures or, you know, what was in the room. The infrastructure was also upgraded as part of the referendum. Again, HVAC throughout the school. This is the air conditioning of the gyms. All the schools now have air-conditioned gyms. That was not the case. And air conditioning of the cafeteria was also completed. And at that time, we took advantage of the work that was being done when they removed the ceiling. The work included all-new ceiling as well as replacement of the lights with new LED lighting. Central Elementary School, similar work. Toilet rooms were renovated this past summer in 2025. Heating, ventilation, air conditioning was this past summer of 2025. The new boilers as well, and that work is still ongoing. We did roof restoration in 2024. And then also this past summer, we did a capital project with the KPTO. It was a donation that was approved at a prior board meeting. Here, the toilet rooms, and just so you're aware, both, four toilet rooms were completed at Central School. There was two on the first floor as well as two on the second floor. With regard to the HVAC work, this is a floor plan. This is the first floor plan of Central Elementary School. Everything is red, is receiving new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. The building that's off to the side is the boiler room, and that's where new boilers are being installed. There's also the corridor of the second floor. Didn't require a slide. I didn't want to have too many slides tonight, but the corridor was also included in the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. And as part of this work, all older Federal Pacific electrical panels are also being replaced in all the schools as part of the referendum work. Here's a photograph of a rooftop unit, and these are the three boilers that are installed in the Central School Boiler Room. Lot different than what was originally there. The boilers that were at Central Elementary School were about 50 years old, so we hope to get some significant efficiency with these newer boilers. This is the project that was done in conjunction with CAPE, the PTO at Central Elementary School. They were looking to put an acrylic service on the basketball court. You know, the blacktop was not in the best condition, so the blacktop was replaced by the district. And the funding donated by CAPE was utilized for the acrylic surfacing as well as the basketball equipment at each end. Additionally, there's a second basketball court that was also lined as part of this project, and there was some ancillary blacktop that was installed as well. Old Mill Elementary School, again, it's a common theme. All the toilet rooms in the majority of the schools were renovated, again, on the first and second floor. Also, we renovated classrooms as part of the work in addition to just heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. There's a new electric service at Old Mill, so if you were impacted by no electric in the building for about a month, that would be the reason why, and again, we did roof restoration. Here are the toilet rooms for Old Mill Elementary School. Again, they were completed on both the first and the second floor. Tile floor-to-ceiling, terrazzo, new fixtures, partitions, and the infrastructure plumbing as well. Again, the HVAC work on the first floor, all the unit vents and condensers are being replaced. We also took this as an opportunity to remove the ceilings and replace the lights with new LED lighting. And the flooring in each of these classrooms on And the flooring in each of these classrooms on the first floor were asbestos vinyl floor, asbestos floor tile. And as part of the scope of this work, all of the asbestos floor tile was removed, and new vinyl tile was installed on the first floor. And the renovation to the rooms with regard to the ceiling and the lighting was done throughout the school on the first and second floor. Additionally, kindergarten classrooms were renovated. They received new flooring and as well as HVAC work. And ceiling and LED lighting as well. Again, HVAC. This is the floor plan. This shows the entire first floor. The areas on the first floor that are not red are actually not on the first floor. That's beneath the gymnasium and some bathrooms. So the only work not done on the first floor was the cafeteria. But all the classrooms received new unit ventilators for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning on the second floor. The gymnasium is air-conditioned. The two spaces that are dashed differently was the bathroom renovations. So again, this is a significant amount of HVAC work that was done. Here's the air conditioning, the new doc socks that are in the gymnasium and the transformer for the new electrical service. West Belmar Elementary School. Again, this had site work that was done in the summer of 2024. And the toilet rooms were also done in '24. And then the new electric, the heat and ventilation in 2025, and the roof restoration was in 2024. Here's some of the site work. This is a new parking lot. Or there was an existing parking lot. It was doubled in size, again, to provide additional off-street parking at the school. There was drainage that was incorporated into this project. The play areas were repaved. We looked to create some green space. So this was asphalt previously. The asphalt was removed, concrete sidewalks and green space was created. Again, bathroom, toilet room renovations at West Belmar as well. There was a boys' and girls' toilet room that was renovated. Additionally, at West Belmar Elementary School, were kindergarten renovations. So in the back corner is a toilet room that was newly renovated for the kindergarten as well as the cabinets and casework that are installed there. New ceilings, new floorings, et cetera. And this was for two classrooms that were at West Belmar. Again, HVAC. All the areas in red receive new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. On the top left is the cafeteria. Then you have the library, classroom. Bottom left is the gymnasium. And again, there was a new electric service that was provided for the school. This is the, again, taking advantage of the work that was done with regard to the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. The ceilings were replaced, and the lighting was replaced with new LED lighting. Wall Intermediate School, boys' and girls' locker rooms. There was a lot of discussion prior to the referendum with regard to the need to renovate those locker rooms, and you'll see in a minute why. Renovate art and technology rooms, and then heating and ventilation, air conditioning in designated areas, and as well as roof restoration. Roof restoration was done at each one of our buildings. So these are the locker rooms. The top are both the before, and then the bottom shows the after. Take more time, and that's the coach or the phys ed office that is in the background on the bottom right photograph. As well as showers, not really utilized at the intermediate school level any longer, but here are two showers that were converted to locker room space, storage space, as well as new bathrooms, which are shown with the... By the way, the pattern that is behind the mirrors there is referred to as digital confetti. And it was as painful when I first heard it as it is saying it right now, but that's what it is. And it was the theme of all of our toilet rooms in the district. So this is the art room at the intermediate school. It has since been furnished, but this has all, has the open ceiling concept, new LED lighting, new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, all-new cabinets, ceramic flooring, and received all-new furniture as part of the referendum work. There is a tech room or technology room that is adjacent to that. There is an additional room off to the side of the technology room. But again, open ceilings, new flooring. This is not ceramic, it's a resilient floor. Cabinetry, sinks, and all-new furniture that was purchased as part of the referendum. Again, HVAC at the intermediate school. We may not need to move our board meetings out of the auditorium for summer of 2026 because the bottom left red is the auditorium that received air conditioning this summer, as well as the gymnasium. And then that's referred to as the back 300 wing. The locker rooms also, new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and the art and tech room. Here's a good photo of the roof restoration that was performed. Again, this is the intermediate school, but it was performed at all of our schools. And then this is the gymnasium where the new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and those are the duck socks that are at the ceiling, providing the HVAC. And as you can see, the gym floor looks pretty good. That's part of the district annual maintenance, and that floor was refinished this summer as well. Not part of the referendum, but again, part of our annual school budget. Our capital project was repaving the parking lot and the drives throughout the intermediate school. So all the asphalt was milled and replaced. Again, this was through a shared service with Monmouth County Public Works. Last school, Wall High School. So there is a significant amount of work being done at the Wall High School. We've renovated the art classrooms and hallway, renovated the technology rooms, the auditorium, which is still in progress. There's toilet rooms, eight toilet rooms were renovated at Wall High School. Significant amount of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, new boilers. And those boilers were over 60 years old. They were the original boilers for the high school that were just, are still in the process of being replaced. All the shingle roofing at the high school was replaced. That was a first summer project in 2024. And roof restoration done on any of the roofing that was done, actually, as part of the last referendum. All roofing that was EPDM that was installed in 2000 is what was part of the roof restoration work. And then we also have the athletic field upgrades that were awarded this summer, and the work is just getting ready to get started. But looking at some of the rooms, again, digital confetti. Again, eight toilet rooms were renovated. The other three rooms are solid white with just the border up top. But again, all-new partitions, fixtures, and yeah, these toilet rooms and all these, and all these hallways are color-coordinated with the corridors. We have green corridors and yellow corridors. So there is some coordination with the outside area. And there's a photo at the bottom right that has like a corian finish that's in the hallway outside those doors. The art and technology corridor. You know, to get the opportunity when you're in the school, if they have an open house, you really need to go see the art and technology corridor. These photos don't really do justice and just make you aware. There is still ongoing work with regard to this project, you know. And school hadn't even started yet. The staff were just trying to load. And you know what? I give a shout-out to the custodians of maintenance for getting schools open. But I really also have to thank the staff that were assigned to these rooms that were being renovated, being asked to come in, you know, at the end of the summer, over Labor Day, I'm sorry, Memorial Day weekend in order to perform the work. I know the air conditioning was not working at the time, so they were in there for hours upon hours over the weekend prior to the start of school. And we truly appreciated their efforts in getting their classrooms ready. There's additional photos of, again, the hallway. And, but they were still putting the glass up, and some of these showcases and the staff were already displaying some of the work of the students while the contractors were still working in the summer. It was actually great. And again, this is a viewpoint from the other end. It's a little odd what's to the right, but that's for the students that come into school either before school or after school because of athletics, because of practices. And they're able to put their drawing portfolio, something that's too large for the locker, in these, they're actually diagonal slots so that the teachers can pick them up or put them into the slot so that students can pick them up after hours. So that was during the development. That was a suggestion or request by the art staff, by the teaching staff, to replace what used to stick out in the hallway. And again, it works great. Within the classrooms, this is the art classroom. This is A3. This individual happened to be Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday, Monday over the weekend preparing her classroom. And these are all four photos of the same classroom. We have A4. This is the ceramics. Again, this is ceramics. Our classroom has ceramic floor, open ceiling concept, new LED lighting. There's clouds that are hanging from the ceilings, all-new cabinetry, and all-new furniture that was installed. These pictures were just recently taken, so, you know, they weren't done for presentation purposes. They were, you know, this is, this is the classroom in action. Also, we have A6. An additional art classroom is on the top, and then the technology room, A7, is on the bottom. All-new furniture for the top classroom. The technology room chose to keep the existing furniture they had and repurposed it into their classroom space. The auditorium's still in progress, but it's getting closer. I will say the current projection is it should be available for district use. And when I say that, it's to occupy, but also to start learning the systems within the space, you know, at the start of November. So these four photos were recently taken. They show the new lighting, the ceiling clouds. Those are soundproofing wood on each side and the, and a new stage. Pretty much everything in this space is new. New sound booth, new HVAC, and the seats are scheduled to be coming in within the next, within the next week. So we'll have a follow-up meeting to show that off when it is finally completed. HVAC at the high school, it's been going on since, you know, and both Central School as well. These contractors started in January. They were working second shift. They were working in the crawl space, trying to do as much preparation work during the school year last year so that they can just hit the ground running in the summer. We had some delays due to lead times for electrical equipment that it was necessary to power. So some of the work was not able to be completed over this past summer, and the work will continue to be performed throughout the school year. We're working with the high school administration to coordinate those efforts. You may have seen Crane in the student parking lot the last two Saturdays, removing and replacing HVAC equipment on the roof. But this shows the extent of the work that is being done at the school, including the cafeteria, again, the art music room, the auditorium, the band room A1, the chorus room A2. That work is currently being performed. It's being done second shift. There was some preparatory work that was done over the summer. The office area, all of the science labs, the media center. That's all work that's still yet to be done. And those are all classrooms, if you're familiar with the school, A Wing, B Wing, and D Wing. C Wing wasn't, didn't need to be done because it had HVAC renovation work done, you know, within, in the last 10 years. A lot of the equipment being replaced, it's interestingly enough, is equipment that was installed with the last referendum. That was approved in 1998 with the equipment being installed in 2000, at least for the unit vents and the condensers, that it's 25 years old. Again, the boilers are original to the building. They're over 60 years old, and they have, were replaced this past summer. And the bottom picture is the original boilers. Just also let you know, all that white around there is asbestos. So we had asbestos abatement that was performed at the beginning of the summer. After the school let's out, this area was secured. And the three boilers in the top left are the new boilers that are replacing the three large-size boilers. And those three new boilers take about, take about as much space as one of the original three boilers. So that work is just finishing up to be online right in time for the heating season. Again, not part of the referendum. This was a capital project over two years. The top was student parking lot, the main student parking lot that was repaved. Again, shared service with the county. And then this is the student auxiliary lot that is next, in front of operations, next to the board office, that was paved this past summer. Not through shared service, but through a co-op. Athletic field upgrades. Also, at the high school, this work was awarded this past summer in August. Some of it, majority of it, the bulk of the site work, all the general construction work was publicly put out to bid and awarded at the board meeting. The turf, the track surfacing was awarded as cooperative purchasing as well as the sight lightings. But this is the, and just in the design of this, the entire site was master planned. You know, we, in meeting with various committees over time, the consensus has always been to bring the varsity-level sports back to the main campus. We have baseball that's on 18th Avenue. We use the municipal complex, which is great. But the coaches, the students, the players have all expressed their interest to play their, at least the varsity level, back on the high school campus. The site has been master planned to allow that. It's not part of this referendum. But there was a lot of work that needed to be put in place in order to allow that work to be done in the future without interfering or interrupting any of the work that we're doing as part of this referendum. So the entire site was, for the most part, master planned. The drainage was considered, and that drainage that's necessary for not only this but for future projects is incorporated into this project, and is going to improve the overall drainage on the site, which has historically been, been an issue with the athletic stadium and the field. But this is the work, phase one. And this is, it's referred to as phase one, phase two. They're both gonna be performed this winter. The upper field is the existing varsity field, and the track is in approximately the same location as the new track that is shown here, but is currently being used as the practice football field. This is the full scope of the work. What's not shown are sidewalks and lighting that lead to the stadiums from the faculty parking lot as well as the student parking lot. But we do have sidewalk that will be extending so that there is access to these two venues. To drill down, you know what? So thing to point out with the lower field, which is referred to as the track stadium field, is it's gonna be a brand-new track. It's off-center. There'll be new home and visitor bleachers. There'll be new sports lighting. The, what's unique with this track is there'll be two straightaways that will allow for bigger meat. This is an eight-lane track, which again allows for larger meat, state meats. And it'll also be great for field day. With the elementary schools are able to run sprints on both sides of the track, having the two straightaways. So additionally, the upper field is the existing varsity field. That'll be the athletic complex. It'll be a multipurpose field. We, the existing home bleachers will remain. The visitor bleachers are being removed to allow for a wider field to accommodate boys' and girls' soccer, which will primarily be played, we would anticipate, on this field. It'll also be lined for boys' and girls' lacrosse. This will be their primary field and could also be utilized for field hockey. The lower field is gonna be lined for both football and field hockey, both fall sports. And it'll be lined, this stage is still in discussion, universal lacrosse and soccer as well. The, and I didn't want to go to this slide yet because this doesn't show the two straights, but this is renderings we're working on with Shaw, the manufacturer of the athletic turf that is being used. turf that is being used, that'll show a concept being considered for the coloring of the end zones, the W in the middle, again, eight-lane running track with two straights, athletic turf field, football field, hockey, soccer, and lacrosse, there's new home and away bleachers, a new press box, and there'll be new musco sports lighting. For the second field, again, the multipurpose, this is the existing Wall Stadium, it's going to be athletic turf, it's going to be lined for soccer, lacrosse, and field hockey, and, and again, that's still up for discussion with the athletic department and the high school administration, we, the existing home bleachers will remain with the press box, visitor bleachers are being removed, I know I'm repeating myself, but I, I think it's important because this is going to be a pretty showcase venue for these sports, which is common, that spectators are on one side and both teams are on the, on the opposite side. This work is, per the, per the contract, is scheduled to start December 2nd, we've met with the athletic department, the high school administration, we're actually going to be starting in November with regard to some drainage, to be the middle of November, start performing some of the drainage work, we are then, at the end of, later in November, we're going to be starting work on the, the, the track field, start doing some site work because the goal is to have this, this work completed for graduation in 2026, and barring any weather issues between now and then, that should be a goal that we're able to reach. Again, this will be on the website tomorrow, so that you can take the opportunity to scroll through the, scroll through the slides and, and view the work that's been completed. Thank you, Dr. Handerhand.
Many thanks to, as we're reassembling at the dais, many thanks to Mr. Smythe for his presentation and for all of his work for, from his departments, his team, it has been a very aggressive past couple of years, certainly in the summer, and I'm certainly grateful for all their hard work. I'd also like to recognize the work of the Finance and Facilities Committee, he's not kidding, Mr. Smythe, when we talk about these late-night meetings, I think he went a little on the short side, saying that they were two or three hours, because I recall some went quite later than that, and I didn't even buy anybody a pizza, which is pretty lousy for me, shame, 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 so I'm not proud of that, so I apologize to the FNF Committee. I'd also like to thank the Board of Education for their continued support, the entire board, continued support and interest and involvement. Those that aren't on the FNF Committee, the committees shuffle every year, they're reappointed, but FNF is, continues to be a very popular one, but, and there's an investment, there's an investment where, you know, you, you see a project starting from paper, and there's something very valuable in seeing it realized in its physical state, so there's a tremendous amount of hard work, and board members that are not on FNF, you know, they make a lot of phone calls, they ask a lot of questions, and, you know, they're, you know, they're incredibly involved in the process as well. Do, do, just. Yep, and I'm going to send this back to you, Mr. Malif.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Handerhand, I'll give my president's report now, I also want to thank, first of all, Mrs. McCann for her presentation that she put together, the presentation that was required for the student performances, again, you can, you can see how, how much work goes into that, and it's tough to, to really grasp that in a meeting like this, so I do encourage you to, to go to the website and look at it. And then secondly, thank you, Mr. Smythe, I think, I hope that everyone who is seeing this either here or at home, got an idea, just from the, from the scope of the, of the presentation, how much work has really been done over the past, the past three years, since the referendum vote, of which we are very grateful to the, to the community for giving the, the district the opportunity to do this. So much of the work is not necessarily visible, we talk, all of the HVAC work, all of the, the toilet rooms, all the things that, the boilers, that you don't necessarily see, but that are so important and so very complicated. We have taken, the committee has gone through every building, some buildings multiple times, with Mr. Smythe, with Dr. Handerhand, with Justin, our accountant, with Scott, Mr. Crisanda, the facilities manager, and the, the work that has been done, and, you know, Mr. Smythe is not exaggerating when he talked about the, the efforts of not only the, the maintenance and custodial staff, but also other, our professional staff, to get these buildings ready for the school year, and I also, I really want to thank the Finance and Facilities Commission, you know, our, our chairman, Mr. Buffa, we also had a great chairman prior to him, Adam Nasser, who did a lot of work on it as well, so he, he should be commended for, for the work he did, all right? Mrs. D. Giovanni, Mr. Barrington are also on the committee, and I want to thank them for the, for the work that, that they have done. I think we're really, you're really going to see a great final project when it's all done, and it's coming, it's all coming down now. At this time, I'd like to introduce the, or mention, the Wall High School Students of the Month and the Knights of the Week. Students of the Month for Grade Nine, we have Nora Farrell, for Grade Ten, we have Michael Bellard, Page Eleven, Page, Grade Eleven, Paige Carroll, and Grade Twelve, Elizabeth Burns. Knights of the Week, for Grade Eleven, Michael DeLassio, for Grade Twelve, Patrick Freud, Grade Ten, Ella Dowd, and also Grade Ten, Declan Denton. I know you've also noticed on the agenda tonight that the board has accepted with great appreciation the following donations, we had some backpack-in-school supplies for the West Belmar School that came from the Wells Construction Company and the Wells family, we thank them, we have four art murals to the Wall Intermediate School from Jason Alders, owner of the Alders Studio, and we had 400 pumpkins that were donated to the Allenwood School from an anonymous donor, and whoever he is or she is, we thank them very much, all right? I said previously I wanted to thank the NNDC while they were here for always coming and doing the, the color guard also, and just one comment I'd like to make, the, the two gentlemen from the, from the NNDC who spoke at the end, you know, moved me a lot with what they, what they had to say, and I'm pretty sure, I would be very certain to say that the views that they had are very, very similar to the, to the large majority of our students. You know, we have great students, and I think that, you know, what, the way that thing came down kind of affected them a little bit and hurt them a little bit, and I greatly appreciate what they had to say tonight. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Handerhand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malif. I would like to extend, as usual, a, a great big heartfelt thank you to the Wall High School Color Guard, and also thank you to Colonel Jacks for coming out this evening. And it's my pleasure, I'm thrilled, to welcome Hazel Garoot to her position at the dais to join Sophia, Sof, so, you know, it's going to, we're poised to have a great year. I would also like to thank, once again, Ms. McCann and Mr. Smythe for their presentations this evening. Like Mr. Malif, you know, I, I just, I would feel remiss if I did not mention our students and their perception regarding the media coverage for a, a dance that was canceled for poor ticket sales. That, please know that in no way the school district connected cellphone use with poor ticket sales, I believe that was something that was woven together by the media, I, I don't know where else, frankly, it could have come from. It's unfortunate, and it is, you know, I encourage the students, and students feeling that way, to reach out to their, you know, talk about it with the high school administration. I do know Mr. Davis has been talking with, you know, his fellow administrators and colleagues to really work on ideas that students are willing to embrace. I will reiterate what the students said, we have extremely robust dances, we have traditions, you know, our proms, you know, our dame's dance, they're tremendous, and the participation is out of sight, and I've had the pleasure of chaperoning a couple of them, and aside from taking a few photos, I really don't see many cellphones in use, so our kids at Wall High School are tremendous, are tremendous students, they are engaged in, in many ways extracurricularly in the community, and, you know, to think that our students really are, you know, you know, live, you know, through their cellphones, I think, is, you know, disingenuous, and it's certainly false, because I see examples of that day in and day out. And again, students, I encourage you to reach out to the high school, you know, because if you've, I, I encourage students to have an, an active voice, and, you know, just like Mr. Malif said, you know, when the students speak from their heart, they, they're able to move a great deal, you know, whether it be a position or whether it be someone's perspective, so I encourage them to not stop the conversation, I encourage them to take on the conversation, and I look forward certainly to the weeks ahead to see what comes, but in no way, shape, or form does the school district think that our students, you know, you know, are choosing socially, their cellphones over an opportunity to, you know, have meaningful engagement with their, with their peers at the high school, because there's too much evidence to our other student activities, too much evidence to the contrary. Changing gears a little bit, October 2nd was National Custodian Appreciation Day. Unfortunately, school is not in session on October 2nd, I do hope you have the opportunity to show some appreciation for our very hard-working custodians. On behalf of the Board of Education, I wish to thank all of our custodians and operations team for everything they do for us, at times it can be a 24/7 job, facilities management never, ever takes a vacation. So much of their hard work goes on behind the scenes, I just want them to know that their efforts do not go unnoticed, and I want to give them a huge thank you. On this evening's agenda, you will notice a resolution to officially name the music hallway at Wall High School Hollander Hall, after the very recently retired Mr. Les Hollander. This dedication is in honor of his 55-plus years as a music educator at Wall High School, where he inspired so many students to pursue music professionally or for personal growth. Thank you, Mr. Hollander, and we all wish you a wonderful, wonderful retirement. The district received a notification from the New Jersey Department of Education's Office of Controversies and Disputes that a parent complaint regarding implementation of the health and physical education curriculum was withdrawn. Please know that the district was in communication with DOE officials prior to the development of the revised elementary schedule. We reached out to the DOE to ensure our proper use of teaching credentials. We received a second communication from the New Jersey Department of Education, Office of Controversies and Disputes, that another individual filed a similar complaint. Know that the district will be responding to this complaint as well, but a new complaint will start the process over from the beginning. This week, I received an inquiry from the public regarding the use of substitute administrators and their role in staff observations. This is a fairly commonplace practice in New Jersey school districts, this is not the first time during my time in Wall where we have employed substitute administrators to complete some faculty observations. Some reasons for doing so include completing the number of observations when an administrator is on leave, another reason is to provide support so principals can dedicate school day hours differently. As most of you are aware, our elementary schools have one principal, we do not have elementary assistant principals. Despite some assistance from central office, our elementary school principals have been required to do a great deal of NJ DOE-required observations, in addition to a multitude of daily responsibilities and the inevitable unplanned event or emergency. Over the summer, after I reviewed the volume of their observations, I wanted to lessen the number of total observations. This year, I wanted the principals to be able to visit classrooms as much as possible informally to support faculty as they implement a brand-new elementary mathematics program and fully implement science of reading methods across the K5 continuum. So in essence, my objective is to support elementary principals in actualizing educational leadership by increasing visibility in the classrooms and engaging with students and staff with a focus, a directed focus, on curriculum and instruction. It was suggested that the administrative substitutes were hired so elementary principals can do cafeteria and recess duties, this is false. As many of you are aware, I was a building principal for 13 years. During those 13 years, I spent countless hours in my school's cafeteria. I am also proud to say that our WTPS principals and our assistant principals at the secondary level have also spent countless hours in the cafeteria. I wish to stress that our elementary principals, prior to this year, have routinely been in the cafeteria during lunches and have been present during recess unless a time-sensitive or urgent matter needed tending to. This is not a new occurrence, principals spending time in caf, in the cafeteria and at recess is fundamental to the job, it's Principalship 101. Great principals and educators use this time in the cafeteria and in the schoolyard to get to know their students in a less formal environment. Lunch and recess are excellent opportunities to observe peer relations. Principals can also use this time to speak with staff members, there are many reasons to do it, and there are many, many benefits. On this evening's agenda, you will notice my retirement effective July 1st, 2026. This school year will mark my sixth and final year as superintendent of Wall Township Public Schools. I am so grateful for the opportunity to work with such amazing educators and support staff, I am also so grateful to have served the students and for my time spent with Wall families and community leaders. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the commitment and hard work of this Board of Education and the previous boards I have had the pleasure of working with during my time in Wall Township. Being a board member is not an easy job, they sacrifice many hours each month so they can do their part to make Wall Township Public Schools District the best it can be. At times, it can be very difficult. You see, Board of Education members are privy to a great deal of information, often confidential information, information that the general public does not and cannot have access to. Board members need this information so that they can make informed decisions, yet they are often bound by confidentiality. Unfortunately, some members of the public equate ethics and confidentiality with lack of transparency. Community members not on the Board of Education have the luxury of unbridled free speech, they can say, assert, and contend basically anything, whether it is true or not. That luxury is not extended to Board of Education members, they are bound by the School Ethics Act and confidentiality. If they violate these tenants, they leave the Board of Education, subject to legal reprimand and vulnerable to litigation. I ask that you please consider this fact before judging the transparency of this or any Board of Education. As I have previously stated, Boards of Education do not manage day-to-day operations of a school district, that is the superintendent's job, but it is the Board's responsibility to hire and evaluate their superintendent, also known as the chief schools administrator. One of the reasons I submitted my retirement letter so early is to provide the Board of Education with ample time to search for a new superintendent. On this evening's agenda, you will also find a resolution for a superintendent search firm, Strategic Exemplary Alliance LLC. The firm will be instrumental in assisting the Board with the search. Community input is critical in building the profile of a suitable candidate. In the coming weeks, the community will be invited to complete a survey and participate in community forums, details are to follow. This is an exciting time for Wall Township, I look forward to observing WTPS's next trajectory. I look forward to observing WTPS's next trajectory. Each year, New Jersey school districts must report to the Student Safety Data System, or SSDS. The system collects incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance use, restraint, and/or seclusion, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. It also includes HIB training, or HIV training, information, and programs conducted to support anti-bullying efforts. The complete reporting for the 2024-2025 school year with breakdowns is included in tonight's agenda as Attachment G under the Superintendent's Report. The number of total confirmed incidents for the 2024-2025 school year is, at the high school, four; intermediate school, 13; Allenwood, zero; Central School, three; Old Mill School, three; West Belmar, zero; and Primary School, zero. Additionally, a requirement under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act is for each school to conduct a school self-assessment for determining grades. Each school's school safety or school climate team is required to complete the self-assessment and enter the school's ratings into the New Jersey Department of Education's online system. I would like to add that this self-assessment does not speak to the number of bullying incidences, but rather the compliance and establish administrative protocols related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Each school's self-assessment for the 2024-2025 school year is provided as Attachment H under the Superintendent's Report. With 78 as the highest possible rating, Wall High School, 77; Wall Intermediate School, 77; Allenwood, 77; Central School, 77; Old Mill School, 78; West Belmar, 77; and Primary School, 77. Enrollment figures for September 2025 are as follows. Pre-K, 71; kindergarten, 247; first grade, 227; second, 226; third grade, 241; fourth grade, 251; fifth grade, 242; sixth grade, 284; seventh grade, 232; eighth grade, 252; ninth grade, 215; 10th grade, 212; 11th grade, 218; and 12th grade, 250, giving us a grand total of 3,168 students enrolled. At this time, I would like to thank you for your attention this evening, and pass this back to our board president, Mr. Malif. Mr. Malif?
Thank you, Dr. Handerhan. I just want to say, you know, when this word went out to, you know, to the staff, and is going to be going out to the community about your retirement, there's going to be big shoes to fill. We were very fortunate to have you as our superintendent. We'll be, I'm sure, be having more comments about this later as we get closer to your retirement. But I know that you're going to continue to lead the district as the way you have up until the time of your retirement. We've been very fortunate to have you as our superintendent, and we certainly hope that we come up with someone just as good. And I thought, at this time, I'd like to ask maybe Mr. Buffa, Mr. Buffa or Vice President is maybe going to speak a word or two about the process of selecting a new superintendent.
So as she always does, Dr. H. was a couple steps ahead of me here. My big contribution for the evening was to tell you that there would be a superintendent search survey coming out in the coming weeks, which she just told you a few moments ago. So keep an eye on the website. There will also be direct communications sent to school community members to let everybody know to please engage with the survey, give us the information, and just fill it out to the best of your ability. And Dr. Handerhan, to piggyback on Mr. Malif, I've seen the changes in your short time here, and I feel like, as a father of five children that have either graduated or still here, I mean, the impact that you've made in your short time has been tremendous, and I thank you, and I'm sure we'll talk a lot about more of that in the future. So that's it.
Okay, before I ask any other board members, I just want to make a mention, we talked, Dr. Handerhan talked about the Hollander's retirement. And next month, at this meeting, we will be honoring retirements that came to light after we had the opportunity to recognize the retirees from last June. So we will be recognizing all recent retirements or retirees since last June at the next board meeting. Any other board member wish to comment? And committee reports are on the agenda, and you can find the results on the website. And at this time, we're going to open up the floor for our second public comment. This public comment is dedicated to items that are on tonight's agenda. So if anybody would like to make comments on agenda items tonight, please come to the
Don Herbert, I see on the agenda that you are hiring an acting assistant superintendent as effective tomorrow. What position is filling?
Would you like to address it?
That position is a per diem for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda item actions?
Hi, Leah Bibby, Wall Township. I just want to thank Mr. Buffa and Mr. Smythe for all their hard work with, obviously, a lot of renovations that have been going on for a few years. I do want to bring to your attention that there are still leaks in the roof happening at Central Elementary, especially in the gym. There are also leaks in other classrooms as well. So I know we did mention, or you guys did mention, that the roof renovations were done throughout the buildings, but I really urge you to look into the issues at Central with the leaking of the roof, especially in the gym, as it is a multi-use facility space, and a lot of kids are there, especially with all the rain that we just had a few days ago. We have a lot of rain here, so it is a concern. So I just ask that you just check in on that and get that wrapped up, and we can be on our way on that. The rest, bathrooms look great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close a public comment. Anything else from any other board members? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask for a, oh, Mr. Smythe.
Sorry, and just to clarify, although the roofing work has been done, a lot of the leaks we are currently experiencing due to one nor'easter that just passed this weekend is not necessarily related to the roof, but it's related to the ongoing mechanical work that is being done on the roof. So it's not necessarily the roof, but it's related to the mechanical equipment on the roof, but it's still noted, and we will follow up with it.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Ms. D. Giovanni, a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Adenizio. Roll call, Mr. Smythe. Oh, it was Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. Mr. Smith, second.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain from 15B, 16A, number two, and 16F.
Noted. Ms. Barbier?
Yes.
Mr. Brereton?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Mal?
Yes, I will abstain from 15B.
Noted.
And at this time, can I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Adenizio? Ms. Adams? All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.